I'd like to call the meeting to order, our meeting of November 19th, 2019. Before doing the rest of the introductions, we will start with our opening for the meeting. We have special guests here tonight, and so I'm going to let them do our presentation of the colors. The Cub Scout PAC 162 is here to present, and Tyler will be leading us tonight.
Color guard, attention. Will the audience please rise? Color guard, report. Color guard, hold. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Absolutely. allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, post the colors. Color guard dismissed. Thank you.
Can y'all come here each month?
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get my hand? Thank you. So, thank you all, and thank you for your patience, and I appreciate that's my Cub Scout PAC, so. So they, so I abused my privilege a little bit as vice chair tonight, and a couple of them, that's part of their award, their merit badge awards, that they present colors at a meeting, and then a few of them will be sneaking back in here to hear a civic meeting, so that, as Henry's listening already, and so that they learn about our community and learn about the civic obligations that we all have. So, on that, we do have some other guests, so I will welcome, as a whole, our PAC 162 members, but then also Jim Lewis, trustee-elect, tonight. Very good. Dr. Henrich, trustee-elect, as well. Cherie Stevens. And any and all the other guests who I didn't get on this list, I apologize, and please introduce yourself now if you'd like to. Otherwise, as at the beginning of all of our meetings, we like to read our Dodge City Community College mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. As always, we'd like to open the meeting with the opportunity for remarks from the audience and community members, so if there's anybody that does have remarks, I'd welcome you to the microphone now to present those. Give ample time to anybody. Young Henry, did you have anything to share? If no remarks, then we'll work into approval of our minutes from our last meeting, 18, of October 29th, 2019. Everybody's had those presented to them, an opportunity to review previous.
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Now the completion of our agenda, additions and deletions. I'll ask Carla to help me on these. So additions is action item F, City of Dodge City Agreement for Construction of Locker Room at Cavalier Field, revisions to the consent agenda, personnel items, numbers one through nine. I'll not read all those, we all have them in front of us, and those, Carla, any other genes? Is that all? That completes it. Any other additions, corrections?
I'd like item under B, personnel, item eight, taken off for discussion, off the consent agenda.
Item eight.
Eight.
Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval of our agenda. Motion by trustee Malone.
Second.
Second by trustee Reichenborn. All in favor, say aye. Moving on, trustees' reports. Trustee Reichenborn, would you like to start, sir?
Yes, I have been taking a college class, enjoyed it very much, but I think that if I wasn't a trustee, I'd probably be failing the class. I was just told today that I'll probably pass because I'm a trustee, so, not by the teacher, though, another student. I'm terrible at it, but it's an art class, and I really, really enjoyed it. Enjoyed the teacher and other people in the class, it's just a very good class.
Well, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, trustee Reichenborn, so. Trustee Ramsar.
I was able to attend the PDK induction ceremony, and it's so wonderful to see such bright young people we have here at the college, and I'm so proud of them, and they, I just wish more people in our community understood the talent and the academic levels of our students out here. It's wonderful. And just so you don't feel bad, I'm contemplating taking Golf One. Chris does not know that yet, so it'll be a secret. And the foundation, we had a ball. It was so much fun at our foundation fundraiser. Great job, everyone.
Trustee Corley.
I don't have a report.
Trustee Hampton.
I want to mention several things that have been important in the community. The, one is here on campus, the agenda of our transition, and congratulations to everybody that worked hours and hours and got that done. Proud of you for doing that, because it's going to make a lot of difference in the progress that we keep here. Also wanted to say thank you to the baseball team, Jake, for helping with the community volunteers for cleanup. That was really neat thing for the S.A. team to do, so thank you for that. On, on Deb, old Kathy's comments about the foundation, foundation is really an exciting entity on campus, and doing a lot of positive things that are going to pay off now and in the future, so thank you to Chris, whatever he is. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, so that's Saturday's front page paper, had a story about DCCC ranks number one statewide in cost and financing. A great story. And if you'll remember, it's only been about two years since we were rated by a different agency as number one in the state. On the same, in the same principles, the number of graduates for one, our graduation rate is higher than a lot of community colleges, forty-one and two, and I think Hispanics are actually poor. So that is really a plus for us, and, let me see, what else did it say here? This is, this one on Saturday was about our finance, and I thought it was particularly good to add that story now, because we've had a lot of controversy recently in the community, and this is an outside entity, we recognize that we were doing good things. So, thank you for all those good things, and I'll get that.
Trustee Malone.
I'm happy to report that today in the United States, at least so far, we have not had a mass shooting, so I have something to be proud of, I guess.
So, and welcome back, trustee. I don't have a whole lot to report. We did have a, excuse me, meeting yesterday, and discussing strategic, continued steps and continued work in our strategic plan as the board. We'll be doing some of that on our agenda tonight, and discussion of our vision and mission. We discussed the more details of the strategic plan yesterday, and that will be for further discussion over this next month, and then be presented in our December board meeting, and so we look forward to continuing talks with that, but I think we're having great conversations around that, and so I appreciate everybody's time and invested efforts in that. And so, other than that, trustee Harshberger is clearly not here tonight, so I get to take his seat for the night, and I'll let President Nolte have a minute, if he has anything to report to us.
Mr. Ballman, is he here?
Oh, we're going to pick on him later.
Let me stop her by, Cherie, our lone perm city manager is leaving us, but she's still doing great things, and so you want to talk about the, we went to, well, you went to, and I went to, I know where Alyssa's, oh, Kansas is now. I didn't know there was Alyssa's Kansas that, I guess, I guess Seward has a campus, and my Google sent me there, so I was a little bit late, and so, could you get up and tell us a little bit about the meeting today? You've got the, you've got the information on the, on the, it's not a roundabout, it's going to be a stoplight, right?
Yeah, well, very preliminary, and Dr. Nolte, there has a drawing, I believe he shared that with me, that we met with KDOT today, because there was a study done between the high school and the college to improve an intersection. It looked at a couple different locations, and they ended up recommending the existing intersection that you have there, because the depths that you can see are a little deceiving, you can actually see further than you can. And so, KDOT felt it landed in within the specifications of their requirements and such. So they're looking at that as a signal intersection that would also create a second entrance to the high school, and then if it all works out, then we'd have a much easier access for the students back and forth between the high school and the community college. We've been working with them for a while, we've got a report from a study that was completed that said, in order to do this, that they really thought we needed to take Loretta, which is the intersection, and go straight south all the way to Manche, and preferably down, on down, past Manche, and like, terrain is incredibly difficult to develop. So, they said, okay, well, we'll relook at that. So I think we're making some progress, but it was, it's baby steps, and if we can get this project on their radar, hopefully we can improve that, where we have students being dropped off over here to run across the highway to go to high school, and then coming over here, they're walking through high school over here to participate in activities, and then back again, it's just not real conducive. Plus, we have significant congestion, obviously, at the intersection of Ross and Fourteenth, so it'll take some effort between all three entities working together, but I think we'll have some success and maybe get some partnership from the state completing it, so I'd be happy to answer with any of my limited knowledge of this project.
Well, and I, we had a welding competition, and we gave scholarships recently, and we had over 150 students, and I picked up three students that were getting ready to walk across the highway fifty, and picked them up and took them to school, which took me about ten minutes, by the way, to take them to school, and it's just, you know, you worry about, kid, something's going to happen someday. You know, we worry about mass shootings and things like that, well, if somebody gets blown over by an airplane, it's a tragedy. And so, I just, I applaud you for what you're doing, and if y'all have questions for it, then I'm going to ask her to tell you a little bit about the, this person that's not going to replace her, but inherit her position, if she's not replacing her.
You didn't tell me, I was going to be talking about this. We did.
She bought my lunch today, too, by the way.
Yeah, we did have a contract signed last night with Nick Hernandez, he'll be my replacement on June one. We'll work together for a couple weeks in June, and then I'll step away and go be grandma, so, we're excited.
Tell them one more thing, and I promise I'll leave you alone, the museum. Last night they had a, they had a kind of a social showing on the museum.
Yes, we had the commission walk through the process, progress on the museum, and it's, I think people will give it a chance and wait to see what that's going to be, it's going to be an incredible asset to our community. So, they're expecting to give the keys turned over to them in December, and then they'll have from December until the, did they say about March, they hoped to wrap up getting all the memorabilia and antiques in with this place.
Be fifteen exhibits, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's a significant expansion of the facility, so we're a little excited about it. And then it'll be full on open tour season.
I had a question on the highway, is there any way to have an estimate of the length of that?
It won't be, obviously, in line, because it'd take quite a bit of design work, and on top of that, we're more than likely going to have to redesign the intersection fourteen and the bypass, so my guess, and this is an accounting degree, not an engineering degree, so let's make sure we're clear, that I think they're going to make a double left, so that'll be a change in the community, it'll expand that intersection pretty significantly, but we were trying to offer the state's assurances, because they're afraid that if they open this intersection and open a south entrance to the high school, it's just going to be seen as the fastest way. So it's going to take all of the traffic issues off of Ross and move it to just a different location. So Jackie Feist was there with us today, and her and I quickly discussed, is there an opportunity where we could maybe do an agreement with KDOT? Because as you all are aware, I'm not going to be there after June, she may retire in four or five years, and as things change, if you can offer some kind of a written agreement that gives the state some assurances that if we can divide the parking lot, and, and I'm just guessing, I have no authority over this, that, that they may say, these two classes go from the north entrance, and these two classes have to enter from the south entrance, and they're almost tagged like they do as colleges, and you're authorized in this parking lot, you're authorized in this parking lot, and do something like that to ensure that we are splitting off that traffic and the demands on those two intersections. It, it will challenge Fourteenth, but the challenge is already there, so if we can make the improvements on top of that, because you're not going to redirect traffic to Loretta, you're going to turn it into a drag strip, and so Terry be, be busy. So, I think the best plan is to focus on improvements to the Fourteenth intersection, and then try to get whatever kind of commitment we can get out of the state to help us with the additional.
I think part of them is, they realize how many change in that area, I think that's very important for the state to realize, it's, it's not a good situation at all, I'm worried about our students going back.
Yeah, they seemed very receptive, so it was positive, or it's not always been that case for them.
Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
And you've done a fine job.
I'm trying to talk her out of it.
Yeah, that's the exciting part.
Thank you. Are you going to stay for Jake's?
Yeah.
I got a couple more.
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like Chris to go ahead and give us a real short synopsis of the, the foundation gala.
Good evening, trustees. The gala was a wonderful evening, we had quite a few people there, probably the biggest highlight for me and for several people that attended the auction, were the forty-plus students that we had volunteering there. They were helping to serve the meal, they were helping to clean up, they were helping greet people at the door, they were helping to show people where their tables, tables were. So it was an absolutely wonderful experience for us to actually have that many students there. Last year, if any of you came, and you remember, we only had about ten or fifteen students there. This year, we had forty, and they all had name tags, everybody knew who they were, several of the students even commented that people at the tables were very, very friendly, and as a result, I think of having all of those students there, we really, really had a wonderful, wonderful turnout for the auction. We didn't quite make the goal that I had talked about at the last trustee meeting, but we came pretty close. We're still working on some of the expenses, we've got some bills that are still hanging out there that haven't been turned over to the foundation yet, but most everything now has been paid for, we're excited about where we were with expenses, we managed to keep the expenses pretty low, and we're looking for, we're already starting to plan for next year, and I'm, I'm pretty excited with how things turned out. Are there any questions regarding, like, specific questions regarding the gala? It was, it was a lot of fun. We did honor, this will be in the paper, we've got a press release that's going to go out hopefully by the end of this week, but we did honor Dr. R.C. Trotter as our Ford County of the Year, as many of you, as many of you know, he has been a very good advocate for Dodge City Community College, Dodge City, Ford County, the region, no matter whether it's college things that she's promoting, city, obviously Dodge City Days, those types of things, and I've volunteered with him at the state fair, it's hard to keep him in the booth, he's so excited about Dodge, so we were very happy to honor him, and he made a very good point when he got up, that he said the same thing that you said, trustee Ramsar, about how wonderful these kids are here. They're a high level of integrity, they're a high level of intelligence, he's hired several of our students who have graduated from Dodge City Community College, especially in the NRC program. So, it was, it was a good, good move for us to honor him this year, it was the Carl and Linda New York Ford County of the Year Award, if you're familiar, we honored Carl and Linda last year as the first recipients of the Ford County of the Year Award, they were very, very happy with that, and we ended up naming the award after them. So, we hope to be able to give this every year, that's the intention, so obviously, if you have any people that you'd like to nominate, let us know, the auction committee is the one that makes the decision on that every year, so we're, we're going to be really kind of honing in on some of our requirements, but the main requirement is, is that these are people that are philanthropic, not necessarily financially, but with their time and their talents and how they give back to the community. So, we're, we're very, very happy with the choice that we made this year, and like I said, we're already starting to plan for next year's auction. We got, we have a lot of, our new software system absolutely hit it out of the park, and we've had a little bit of tweaks and some things that we need to discuss with the company to fix for next year, but all in all, we were very, very happy, and it's making reporting very, very easy for me, so, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Kristi, I know you thought you'd probably get away from this, but go ahead and tell us about the, the actions we've got coming up.
Good evening, so on December seventh, on Saturday, it is a conk-filled Saturday, so at 10:00 a.m. will be the 2012 Hall of Fame induction ceremony, it will be in the Dodge City Community College library, so it's a new venue, we moved it there from the ballroom last year to library, so that'll be exciting, that is at 10:00. Then in between, you can go to lunch and watch our men's and women's basketball teams compete in the afternoon, and then head over to Gavin Petro, we're now Catwood Capital, Sulu, I believe that's called, and join us for our staff and faculty holiday party, so that'll be, doors open at 6:30, and at 7:00, we do have like games this year, we're going to have like a snowman building competition, it is summer in December, so come in your luau year and just kind of fun, and so everybody can just have a good time and just kind of pass some camaraderie, hopefully we can pull some people they don't know, or from different departments, so we're excited, it'll be a fun-filled day of just, right? So, yeah.
Thank you.
You bet.
Just quickly, I want you to be aware that probably either in January or February, our contact at Dr. Silver will have a Cora, Cora, person come talk to us about Cora, as well as, we're going to have, we're going to have Susan talk about our strategic planning, and we'll have Joe there for that also. So that will be kind of, kind of what we did two years ago, and so I want you to make sure you put that on your calendar. We had, a couple weeks ago, we had Rural and Independent Innovators Conference, and all three presidents, one of myself, the one from Seward, as well as the president from Ken from Seward, and then Ryan from, from Garden, we spoke about what innovations and what's going on in colleges and universities, it went really, really well, and so that was a really interesting conference, and some really innovative people are there, and it was kind of neat to hear what people are inventing, and, you know, the fab labs are going all over the state, and so that's something we probably need to look at down the road. You know, it's interesting, people are not using, and, and just like trustee Reichenborn said, people aren't using their hands anymore, you know, in schools, nobody's using their hands, everybody's got, you know, it's, if they're using them, they're using them on their, on their phones, so it's nice to see people getting involved and making things and doing. I mean, my daughter, for example, is in, is in a wood shop, and I'm excited for that, and so, you know, going back to some of the things that we should have done a long time ago, so we have that, but things are going well, it's a good year. I tell you what, y'all would have been so, so excited, we had a, last week we had a welding competition, we had about a hundred and fifty students, I think, there, and we were able to give out ten scholarships, and they were from all over the area, and these kids were so excited, and Justin and his group had gotten things for these, these individuals to, to, for prizes and things, and it was fun to watch these kids, and they were from all over. By the way, just to let you know, Dodge City got members too, second, but they did really well, so, and these, these are fabulous welders, fabulous welders, so I'm excited, hopefully all, hope all hundred and fifty come our way. There you go.
Thanks, President. Carla, do we have, we have student, student.
Beth is going to handle that by introducing all the new SGA officers.
Oh, very good.
Okay.
Beth, would you like to?
Are you ready?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Vice Chairman Presley and trustees. First, I wanted to give just a brief student affairs report, and I wanted to refer to the report that's in your packets every month. Several months ago, we had some requests for information from the board related to Praxis testing, and that is the certification test that's required for teaching, and our local folks that were in all the area school districts were having to travel either to Hays or to Wichita to take the test, that was very time-consuming, and so we had the request that we get the certification, and so we are up and running on that, and we had, you can see, the Praxis test was on October the 11th, and we had a full session, and so I wanted everybody to be aware that as soon as the national Praxis opens online registration, it fills up sometimes within hours, and we don't have control over who we sign up, because we don't do it, and it's first come, first served, online, and so what happens is, we are actually getting people from eastern Colorado, Oklahoma, signing up, so we've communicated with all of our area school districts, and folks like Kansas Newman, that have teacher education graduates, that as soon as it opens, you got to be ready and get in there. But just to give you an example, all of them are full up until February 14th, so, and we are a little bit limited by the number that we can offer based on the number of computers, it's showing so far that we could probably expand, but we are beyond our capacity in our testing lab. So it's turned out to be a very educational benefit, I think, for the community, the surrounding areas and school districts, so that's what we're doing there, and you can look every month in the report on the testing center, and it shows exactly how many tests were given for different areas, so I hope that's helpful if you're asked questions. Next, I want to turn to the residence life area, in that report, you can see there that they last month hosted the, one of the largest events on campus that we host every year, and that is our annual, very popular Halloween trick-or-treating in the residence halls. Would you believe they had, and this, this just still astounds me, they had 1,014 children that went through, and then they were.
Not only parents.
By 415 parents, so it continues to grow every year and be very popular, and I think parents think it's a safe place. But what's even more important is our students love hosting that, a lot of them miss their nephews and nieces from back home, and so it's a good interactive event for our students. I am going to introduce some people. Would you believe they had, and this, this just still astounds me, they had 1,014 children that went through, and then they were.
Not only parents.
By 415 parents. So, it continues to grow every year and be very popular, and I think parents think it's a safe place. But what's even more important is our students love hosting that. A lot of them miss their nephews and nieces from back home, and so it's a good interactive event for our students. I am going to introduce some people tonight that are here, and they're the reason why we're all in the room. They're our students and some of our finest. First of all, and they, the residence life area, they want to give you what they call some of their SWAG, which is what they provide, and they've decided that they want to provide for other students that live in the residence hall area. So, I'm going to ask Margarita Morales, who is the Director of Residence Life, to come forward and introduce. These are resident assistants, and they're some of the most important Dodge City Community College employees.
Thank you.
And they are employees, and those shopping bags are the most popular with students and the most requested, because they arrive and they don't have shopping bags, and they're very recycling-conscious, and so that's something that's very important. Margarita, you've got the mic. Tell us who we got here.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. A pleasure to stand up here and get to talk to you guys, because you guys make all the decisions for us. We'll look here on the left, our tallest gentleman, right there, he's got his luscious hair, is he in the mailbox? So, he is a baseball player from Canada. Right next to him, we have Joshua Jackson, who is a football player from Alabama, Alabama. Sorry, I was getting that one mixed up. And then on the other side of the room, we have Brittany Ramirez, who's a soccer player from Texas. And so, they are three of the 12 RAs that we hire every year. They are on scholarships. They are a wonderful model of what we hope our students achieve, learn, and grow to be. They are, we are fortunate enough that they're mature enough when they get here. Being a Juco, we don't always get the most mature individuals, but we've gotten some great students, and they help us and steer everyone else in the right direction.
Okay, thank you, Margarita, and thanks to the. Some of them are over there working now or have other responsibilities. We may try at some time in the spring to bring some more of them. So, next up, I'm going to ask the student government president to come up, and they got off to a great start this year. There was a little delay. When they went through the election process, they had some tie votes. So, they had to have runoff elections, and so they got to experience all that, and I'm just really, really proud of them. And this, I'll let you introduce yourself, and then who the other officers are with you.
So, good evening, Board of Trustees, Mr. Chairperson and President Maltzey. I first wanted to start off by introducing myself. I'm the president, Jesse Graham. I'm from Alabama. And then we have, if Vicki can stand up, she's our vice president. And then that's Vicki Foster. Our data director, Gregorio Valdez, is not here. Our activities chair, NIE Rodriguez. And then our activities co-chair, Leslie Friddella. And our marketing chair, Marcelina Guerrero. Like you said before, we had a slow start, but we are excited to hit the ground running. A couple of the clubs that we had on campus, Student Nursing Association, they attended the Kansas Association of Nursing Students, and a few of our Dodge City nursing students were actually able to get on the board for that organization. East Ford and Hope are two different new clubs that did come to our campus. East Ford has a bi-weekly video game tournament in the library, and these tournaments do have a $10 entry fee. Hope's purpose is to let campus students know they are not alone. The club's goals are to inform people on mental health issues and spreading positively around campus. Our art club also plans to receive funding to receive a new mural for our cafeteria as well. And SGA has helped out with a couple of events. These include Ted Talk Thursday, Scary Movie Night on the Lawn, and a giant Scrabble game in the halls.
By the way, this afternoon, I told her she hadn't access, so did you. Bye for now. That's all. Thank you, thank you, Bev, and thank you, President Graham, and welcome. We look forward to many more reports coming. So, then, Mike Webster, Director of Education Technologies. We, last minute yesterday, rallied up a request for you to come and tell us all the exciting things about the Gensu Bar program, and the wonderful transition that I'm sure took place, and everybody smiling faces about it, right?
Right.
Good.
I'm going to do the report now. Thank you very much. Evening. It's almost been a year since I was last up here asking, begging, pleading for your consideration to move forward with this project. So, it's exciting to report that as of last Wednesday, we are online with it. We are fully operational, well, not fully operational yet, we are operational on it. The only remaining pieces are our payroll department, we are still running payroll out of the old system, and they're going to continue to do that for November, December's payroll. And we did that on purpose, just to make sure that payroll was running correctly, but also that at the end of the year, W2s, we've just made the next easier, clean transition, so that they can all be running the old system, and then we can transition to the new system for payroll. Gensu Bar will actually be back on site for that January payroll. That's going to be our first payroll out of the new system. So, they'll be here to hold their hands through that, make sure that goes smoothly. We actually started the go-live process on November 4th. Gensu Bar was on site here for two weeks, helping us through that transition data. We were able to register students into the new system through my DC3S, which is our student faculty and staff portal, with very minimal issues. Right now, all staff, minus payroll, is working out of it. We've only had some minor issues come up that we've all been able to fix and resolve, and Gensu Bar's been very helpful and responsive to our, our requests for that. The only real issue that we discovered was that our GL for the 2018-2019 fiscal year came over as closed, and Gensu Bar didn't realize that we're still in the audit, and so we needed to keep that open. So, they're working with us right now to reopen that and re-transition that data over. We're going to be doing that during Thanksgiving break out of the system, and then have come over as open and allow us to make any adjustments the auditors need us to make, and then look into the new system. During that time, budget amounts will then be entered into the GL master. Accounts payable has been able to write and issue checks. Excited about that. And we're working with our bookstore vendor, MBS, to complete an integration with them for our POS system with them, so the bookstore can be fully integrated into the new system and MBS at the same time. We're also working with CashNet, our online payment provider, for a fully system integration with that. Right now, we kind of do just a very basic pass-through with them. That allows students to make payments online, but this new integration will actually be in real-time. Other than that, like I said, we've been, we've been operating out of the new system for, oh, almost a week now, and only encountered minor issues that we've been able to tackle. And I imagine we're just going to keep operating like that probably for the next few months, just tackling little issues that come up and little tweaks that need to be made. There's a lot of permissions embedded into this new software that need to be adjusted, but we'll continue to work through that. My, my IT staff will continue to work through that. But other than that, it's been fairly smooth transition, so we're grateful for that. Any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the update. Well, no other reports, we'll move on to our board action items. Board action item A is the Dodge City Community College mission, vision, and core values. Mr. Long, I'd welcome you to the podium, sir, to present this.
Thank you for having me here this evening. I am here today to update you on the work that's been done here at the college to update the college's mission, vision, and core values as the first step in the process of updating the college's strategic plan. We held a series of meetings in September to gather input from college stakeholders, including students, faculty, staff, college administrators, as well as boards themselves. We had 71 people participate in these meetings, in which we reviewed the mission, vision, core values, and gathered input as far as how the mission, vision, core values could be updated to best serve the college moving forward. In the board's October working session, we presented the updated mission, vision, core values as a draft for the board's review and comments, and now we're here, ready to present the finalized version for your approval of the two. To remind you of the, as of this moment, still current, mission, vision, core values. The college's mission states, as trustee Presley read at the beginning of the meeting, DC3 will provide opportunities for high-quality learning, a well-enhanced community, and personal development in a student-centered environment. The college's mission statement states, DC3 will be the model among peer institutions who are delivering the highest quality education and career development. The college has nine core values. They are collaboration, compassion, diversity, excellence, inclusiveness, integrity, involvement, learning, and loyalty. We have a series of meetings we held with the 71 stakeholders. People recommended the mission be updated in order to make the work choice more meaningful to students and also reflect how the college helps students to achieve their educational and career goals. With respect to the mission, no vision rather, people recommended that the vision reflect a goal that is more inspirational and more specific, and also one that does not rely upon adhered comparison. We prefer the vision to be something that reflects how the college stands on its own. Then with respect to the core values, the feeling was that it would be better if the core values were fewer in number. The point of core values is that they're supposed to be able to guide behavior and how we interact with each other, and with a fewer number, it would be easier for people to bear in mind, and also that the core values should have more clear definitions. Based on this input from the college stakeholders, we developed the updated mission, vision, core values. The updated mission statement reads, Dodge City Community College provides a student-centered learning environment where students can achieve their educational, personal, and career goals. You see, we moved student-centered much closer to the beginning of the sentence, and we're explicit about the colleges here to help students achieve their goals. For the vision statement, we agreed that we wanted to be more specific, hopefully more inspirational. We chose to focus on the university center, which the college is working to establish at this point. Vision statement reads, Dodge City Community College will assist in establishing a university center where students can pursue baccalaureate degrees in a range of academic and career-focused programs. By 2025, at least 50 Dodge City Community College students will oversee baccalaureate degrees through the university center. So, hopefully, this hits the points that came up in the feedback session. So, it is a specific, tangible, concrete goal with a timeline and a specific target, and helping people to achieve baccalaureate degrees without having to leave the community. Hopefully, that's something that we can all feel excited about and inspired by. In terms of the core values, we boiled them down from nine to four. First core value is students first. At Dodge City Community College, we make decisions with the best interest of students in mind. Next is community. Dodge City Community College provides a welcoming environment where everyone can feel that they belong. We are actively engaged in the communities we serve and invite our community members to engage with campus activities. Next is integrity. At Dodge City Community College, we treat each other fairly and honestly. We uphold academic honesty and are responsible students of the resources entrusted to us. Finally, innovation. At Dodge City Community College, we are always looking for ways to better serve our students and our community. We will not be content with business as usual. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Appreciate it, sir. And so with that presentation, I would entertain a motion as we were hoping to take final action on this tonight.
A move, Mr. Chairman, that we accept this new statement.
Good. Thank you, motion trustee Kim.
Second.
Second trustee corporal. Any further discussion on the mission, vision, and core value statements presented tonight?
I would like to make a statement about the work times that we put in on this, talking about it and thinking about it and going through what it means, and I found it to be very substantial in drawing our thinking to what we really are doing. And I so appreciate the time with Mr. Long. Thank you. Glad that he could be here with us. So, I just wanted you to know that I really thought that was an excellent explanation.
Thank you, Justice.
Very valuable advice.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Mr. Ms. Long, again, we appreciate it, and we look forward to talking to you again soon about our specific strategic goals. Moving on, our next item is Resolution Number 2019-17, capital outlay. Vice President Forgy, if you would like to present, sir.
Every five years, the Board of Trustees have approved a resolution authorizing the capital outlay levy not to exceed 200,000. This capital outlay, the resolution, provides funds for remodeling, refinishing, building, buildings, furnishing equipment. If required, we have it on, we've had it in existence for, for years now, and we continue it.
As a penalty, are there any specific plans for capital outlay to make in a couple years?
We, we move to, obviously, the building, our GM, for example, that, our new sign that we've got out there, is one of, is that from our capital outlay?
Actually, that came from our technology.
Thank you for my technology.
But the fund also, you, it's important to, to kind of build that up, because if the college did want to purchase a building, not purchase, but build a building.
Right.
It's important to have a fund out there, reserved, built up, so that you don't have to borrow as much. And so, if you did have a big project, let's say a big chiller or something like that that would go out HVAC system, and those are pretty expensive.
Thirty-eight thousand pieces.
Those are the types of expenses that furnishing equipment, a building that would fall into this category. You can also purchase land. I don't think, for, in that process of doing that, but that's one of the other things that you can do, is, and you may do that off, off-site here, it may not be somewhere here, it may be somewhere else, but in, in the community, but that would allow you to do that as well, but that's what the capital outlay is for.
Well, we actually paid for the fixing the gym already. I mean, the money's there already. It's not coming out of this new capital outlay. We've already. I don't, could have, but it's already paid, it's already budgeted for.
It's been put in the budget for this year. I've put in $300,000 for this year, this year.
But are we, do we have any idea what we're going to do with this money? Are we going to do some deferred maintenance with it?
Well, that's, there are certain things you can do and can't do. It has to be building-related, so you can't go out here and fix your road. But what you do is use, use your general fund to do that type of expenditure. Sidewalks are another thing. You cannot use capital outlay funds for sidewalks. Again, it has to be building-related. So, let's say the acoustics in the gym. So let's say the acoustics in the gym, which need to be fixed.
Yeah.
And that probably would cost $100,000, I'm guessing. That was originally, you remember, taken out of the project when the gym was built, and we have now four acoustics in there. We'll be coming to the board in the next couple of months to, you know, to do something about that. But that's the type of expenditure.
Furnishings?
Furnishings, computer equipment in the classrooms, a desk, and things like that. Yes.
How would, on the-
We just got through about, what, 28 desks, or, some of the desks around here were not in use yet.
Roofs, if you had a major expense that was not covered by insurance, a roof, like it's a burden making stop.
Okay. Now, on the, on page, on the second page, at the bottom of the first paragraph, it says, "acquisition of real property for use as building sites or for educational programs." How would you describe an educational program there that would fit into the parameters of I mean, I've tried to work this through my mind. I've been on-
Is that like Beeson? Would that be like Beeson that we bought?
Possibly, yeah.
Is that, Glenn, would that be?
Mm-hmm.
We bought Beeson, I mean, we bought, you know, Beeson property, you know, the building for that, and that's how they, that's how they were able to buy that off, and it was off property.
Okay, but that was property. So-
And the building itself.
The building itself, but that's-
But that would allow you to do that if you, if the board chose to do that. That's one of the things that's allowed by statute.
Okay, that's still, that's still buying property. I'm trying to wrap my head around what educational programs might be and how that would fall under capital outlay, because-
With our new nursing aid and all that.
Well, let's say you wanted to start a law enforcement center, for lack of a better idea, and you're going to have training out there, and they're going to have a mass critical, you know, shooter incident, but they have a training site out there. So let's say you were wanting to do that, but you couldn't do it here on campus. You buy that property for that purpose, for that educational program. That's probably an example. And that's one that, I used that because they did that in Tallahassee, that's a law enforcement center.
Well, is that a, that's still a purchase of property. What I'm, I just found it strange that that, "or for educational programs," was tacked on to the end of that, and I've dealt with capital outlay for many years, and I've, I have never seen that. I only, I know what capital outlay's for, and I've never seen it tied to educational program, but, you know, I, I'm okay with it on there, but-
I think you're-
It's just strange.
I think the wording there is that the acquisition of real property for educational programs. Let me give you another example. Let's say we wanted to start a agricultural program and have a herd of livestock on it, and so we go out and buy 360 acres, and now you have a livestock, you know, program out there. That would be another type of program that you could do.
That's property. But how about, how about-
But it's acquiring the property for an educational program.
It says "or for educational programs." Could we buy the cattle?
I'd have to think about that.
Okay.
That might be a-
Well, I'm okay with it.
Equipment.
Yeah.
That's equipment.
I don't know. Okay. I just never seen that in, in a proposal for a capital outlay, so.
Question.
But I guess, again, I guess it's a-
Trustee Ballmer?
Yes, on the O P E building that's condemned, do we know a cost of renovating that or re-
We're working on that.
The, we had estimated about $300,000, that was kind of the last estimate that we'd gotten, so that's kind of what we're, we're thinking. And maybe a little bit more than that, we don't know yet, but we hope to have bids, maybe to the board in January.
Okay. Then on the, you know, the study that was done by engineers 10 years ago, that said we needed deferred ma, I mean, we have deferred maintenance, so we need to just fix him, it's $10 million. Do we have any specific plans to address any of those issues?
We do, we do. And we're working on those, like sidewalks and things like that. Matter of fact, that's funny that you mention that, because in, in our strategic plan, Joe found that was one of the big things around all the campuses, people are concerned about deferred maintenance, and you have a lot of things, and we're trying to fix some things that needed to be fixed about 10 years ago, you know, but they're, we're working on those where there'd be, where there'd be, you know, one thing I have issues with is our signage is pretty bad.
Signage is bad, our, currently our locks on our doors, we have an issue with that. We, we think we have master keys floating out there that maybe shouldn't be. So we're looking at a card access type of system. That would cost about $2,000 or $2,500 per door, so that would be, and probably about $75,000 to do that. But that would be control where we wouldn't need, then issuing keys, you issue cards. Well, when somebody leaves and they'll, you know, turn in their key, that's a problem. But if they leave and don't turn in their card, you just take them out of the system. So you don't have a security issue that way.
And that's, you know, and that's where, you know, like, like we're talking shootings and things like that, you know, we-
You can lock down the doors by that remote system that we're going to be looking at.
I know, I know when Jay first started, you were handed a set of keys about like this, weren't you?
Okay.
Just to carry a whole backpack.
Well, when we, when we talk about repairs, it's mentioned repairs in, in our statement here.
That's keys, that's the keys. And those are the ones that I don't know what they're worth.
But it's, it's not for repair of sidewalks.
No, you cannot repair sidewalks with these funds.
Okay.
You have, now, we budget capital improvements in our general fund, which can be used for sidewalks.
Right.
Yesterday-
So we have capital outlay funds and capital funds. Capital funds are budgeted in the general fund. Capital outlay funds, separate fund.
Yesterday, you did a very nice job at our work session in explaining deferred maintenance and all of that, and I think you explained it to where we understood it yesterday.
Yeah, some of the, some of the report that I looked at, when I looked at the deferred maintenance report, it looked like a wish list of things that they would like to have done and add to the building, which is more like a capital improvement plan rather than a deferred maintenance plan. I consider deferred maintenance, yes, roads, sidewalks, roofs, things like that. A new fine arts building is not deferred maintenance, that is a capital improvement plan. So, you know, the, now, the old gym repairing that, that would be a kind of deferred maintenance issue, I guess you might say, because that's, that's been on the-
Recurring maintenance issue.
Yeah.
And Sharice and I were talking recently about roads here. I know, Dr. Presley, you were talking about that road coming here is not in great shape, and so, you know, those are, those are things we've got to continue to fix.
To, if I remember Russ correctly, that the road from, like, Bree Park up to the top of the hill, I think it was going to cost $150,000 just for that stretch of asphalt. But can't use capital outlay funds on that, that's got to be capital.
Do we, is there anything in our capital outlay fund at this present time? Have we exhausted it?
Oh, no, there's about $700,000.
Okay.
Hang on. I'll tell you exactly how much was in it. If I can find it quickly. I think it was about $700,000 that was in it.
About a year's worth of-
And we, and we use some of that to pay our, some of our long-term debt.
This two mills, do you know what, how much tax that is going to cost taxpayers on $100,000, or?
Well, it's not going to change, it's what it is right now.
It is now, it's still the same.
Yes, it's still the same.
Yeah.
So it-
Good question. That was asked before, and that's, that, it's not going to cost you anything.
That's the, the statutes, that's the cap, that's the max you can do.
This is basically maintaining what we already have in place.
Let me, let me give you an example. Last year, this is for 1819, we started out capital outlay funds at a balance of about $950,000, okay? Principal and interest on that took up about $630,000. So to pay off some of our debt that we, or some of our buildings and things, probably one of the biggest ones is the, the-
Residents' houses.
No, no, those come out of the, yeah, they could. No, they come out of the separate funds, because we use the housing auxiliary fund to pay a lot of it. But the student activity centers, the dome, is a big payment. There's some other payments over there. So the total of that $945,000, well, we've used 643 of it just on paying off debt. So that'll leave $300,000 in the capital outlay fund for other purposes.
So we don't have $700,000?
Now, starting this year, it was like $400,000, but we've, we've eliminated, reduced some of our debt as well, though, so that's kind of, that's kind of helped.
Okay. Good. A move we approve.
Motion, Trustee Rackamore? Second. Second, Trustee Ballmer. Any further discussion? And again, to clarify, this is continuance of the two mills that are already been levied and have continued, and maybe Dr. Forgy can tell me how long, but I can't remember how long those have been.
Well, from-
It's been a couple, a couple different cycles.
Yeah, I guess. This is the third or fourth cycle.
Yeah. And these are five-year, correct?
Correct, a five-year period, every five years.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Dr. Forgy. Moving on into our 2020-2021 budget calendar.
This is just the annual calendar for the budget process. No significant changes in yet, except for these gyms are this year to do the budgeting, so that might be until all.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Trustee Rackamore?
Second.
Trustee Corbly. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Moving on. Fiscal year 2020-2021 tuition and fees, Dr. Forgy.
Uh, this is a effort to, I guess there's three objectives here. One of them was to reduce our online fees, especially for, and let me back up a little bit, most of our online classes are taken by our local students. And so the online fee right now is $135, and so that's, that's, you know, if you, if you want to take an online class, if you're a working adult and having trouble getting to class, and the only time you can do that is do an online class, it's going to cost you $135. Whereas if you have the ability to take a face-to-face class, well, it's like $100, $105. So we're wanting to reduce that online fee, you basically just do away with online fees, and say, okay, here's what your tuition fees are going to be, regardless of whether you're a Ford County student, or out of county, out of state, or international student. We're just going to charge you tuition fees. We're not going to say, you know, here's your online fee, or this fee, or that fee. So that was one objective, to, to eliminate that fee, to make it more affordable and accessible, especially for Ford County students, because this will greatly reduce their online fees or all fees. The second objective is to eliminate the parking and registration fees. Some of the registration, as you look at hurdles and obstacles for students to enroll, sometimes a registration fee can be a hurdle, it can be, you know, they may not have that many at that time they want to enroll. So we want to eliminate that, and parking fee has always been an issue with students. You know, well, I don't drive a car, I take, you know, my, you know, I get dropped off or whatever, well, it, you know, we're charged that parking fee, so we went to eliminate that. So to kind of offset those, restructured it to eliminate those fees, to eliminate the, the online, again, online tuition fee, and then to make it fairly equitable where we don't lose a lot of revenue, maybe, you know, increase it just a little bit like we try to do every year. And so this proposal attempts to do that.
I'm trying to remember, graduation also, don't we eliminate that or this kind of thing?
I don't remember that we have a graduation fee. So, but if we did have one, I would have eliminated that.
Good.
What is our total budget now?
The total budget? It's right around $20 million.
Okay, so, 5% basically of that's a million, and we had a million-dollar surplus last year. With a million-dollar surplus, is there, is there, I have another follow-up question, but-
That's last year.
I understand, but it evidently is pretty recent, because it was in the Globe in October, that we had a million-dollar surplus. With a million-dollar surplus, how much, it says we're going to generate $125,000. How much of that $125,000 is coming from Ford County students?
Uh, I would say-
80% or 80%?
Well, Ford County students take up 52% of our enrollment.
So about half.
Uh, not necessarily, because they, well, I guess you would have to say that, but out-of-state students, because of the online fee, the online fee is $134, $135 right now, regardless whether you're out of state, out of county, or wherever, international. If you're an out-of-state or an international student, you're going to be paying a higher rate for those online classes.
Okay.
So there's going to be some losers and winners, but I'm trying to get it to where it's kind of neutral.
Well, how much is, so actually, maybe $65,000 of that $125,000 would be coming from Ford County, and what are our total, what's the total for fees and, and tuition from all our students? What's, how much is that?
The total budget?
Well, total income from tuition and fees from students.
It is $2.8 million. That's in the general fund that we add in.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going to the point, I guess you probably already figured out, that we've raised fees for Ford County students from $54, $44 to $54, and if it's only going to generate $65,000 more, why don't we just leave it the same? Why raise those? Why raise the, the fees from 44 to 54? Why not leave the fees for Ford County residents the same? That would, I mean, they're the ones, the Ford County residents are paying the bills anyway.
Those, right now, those students are paying higher online fees, they're paying parking fees, and they're paying registration fees, so you're going to be losing that revenue.
All I'm asking is that on these two sheets you have here, the yellow and the green boxes, that we just leave the fee for Ford County residents at $44 instead of $54, and we leave everything else the same on the two sheets.
You're taking a reduction. I don't think that would be your plan. You're changing them, I'd like to speak up, to be $3 in some such difference, and then your forecast, 106 to 110, so that's what the Ford County guy would be up, would be $3.37. That's what you're changing.
That's not, that's fuzzy math again, if you-
No, 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 no.
No, no, I mean, Trustee Rackamore, it's, I mean, it's-
If we're leaving it, if we're leaving-
The total, look at the total, $106.
I've got it. I've seen that, okay?
Well, it's not fuzzy, it's-
Well, what I'm saying is, here on the green, on the green box, everybody got the green box?
Yep, I see it, it's $10.
We've eliminated, wait a minute.
Parking.
Okay, we've eliminated that. I'm saying keep that eliminated, keep that eliminated, not, we're not adding that back in. So if we charge the students $44 for their fees instead of $54, they're saving $10 on fees.
Then you'd have to-
We're not adding, you don't have to add that back in. You don't have to add the parking fees back in.
Be losing money doing that.
You're going to lose $65,000.
You're losing a lot more than that.
You only made 100, look, how much, wait a minute, just a minute, just let me ask a question here. You said here on your information, it's going to generate an additional $125,000. The change is going to generate $125,000. Out of that, 50% of that is coming from-
It doesn't work that way. Let me give you an example. Our total number of credit hours- It doesn't work that way. Let me give you an example. Our total number of credit hours are thirty-five thousand. So half of that, Ford County, is a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So multiply, excuse me, half of thirty-five thousand is seventeen thousand five hundred. If you, if you multiply seventeen thousand five hundred by ten dollars, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that you will lose.
Then how, how come we're, we say here that it's gonna generate an additional.
Because of the way it works for out-of-state students paying more.
Well, we're not making them pay less, we're gonna leave it the same. They're still gonna pay more. All we're changing, all I'm asking you to change is that one number. We're gonna leave the green box exactly the same as it is, except we're gonna plug in forty-four to Ford County fees instead of fifty-four.
Then you would have a negative fifty thousand dollars into this formula.
The college is being paid for by Ford County taxpayers. They should get something. They shouldn't have to pay the same thing everybody else does.
I just gave a whole bunch of five hundred dollars.
Did you give all of them that?
If they had the great point. Yes.
Okay.
Three dollars and thirty-seven cents.
It's not really, but that's okay. It's ten dollars is ten dollars.
No, you took out about six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I'm saying, don't, I'm saying, leave that off. Leave that off.
Okay, well then.
Look at the green, if you look at the green box, you've got the green box, just leave that off.
You see that six sixty-seven in the green box?
No, I'm saying, leave it blank. Don't add it in there.
Do the math. Then look what.
Okay, you do the math. Forty-four, how much is, is, they would pay fees for Ford County residents in the yellow box? Forty-four dollars. How much do we charge them in the green box? Fifty-four dollars. Fifty-four dollars, that's ten dollars more.
Right, look at the total. That'd be a hundred dollars, right?
You're not, I'm not talking about the adding in, the, they're not gonna pay the green fee anyway. Nobody is. Nobody's gonna pay the parking fee.
No, I, I didn't mean that. Look at the one-ten total.
That's where the one-ten comes from, Jim.
Doesn't have the parking fee.
That's right. That's how come it's four dollars instead of ten dollars. But we were leaving the parking fee off anyway.
Great. So take the one-ten and ten off, that's a hundred. So they just went down six dollars and sixty-seven cents. And if that's your question, I understand it.
The, the big key, and what Dr. Ford explained, is that it's not, we're not just changing those fee and tuition schedules. It, it all comes down to the very bottom line of the boxes. Online tuition numbers are changing, and we're doing away with the current online tuition structure, which then remodels how the whole rest of the tuition fees were. And that's where the dollars don't, we're just not talking apples and apples here any longer. So it's not as simple as just comparing those two boxes.
Exactly. If you're an online student, if you're, if you're taking six hours online right now, you're gonna be saving, uh, six times, what, thirty-five dollars? So you're gonna be saving two hundred dollars right now.
With a mil, with a million dollar surplus each year. Okay, just a minute, hold on, let me finish, let me finish.
We were trying to get that million dollars, sir.
Aren't we gonna work hard next year to get it too? I mean, if we, if we tightened our belt, if we tightened, if we tightened our belt to get this million, are we now suddenly gonna loosen our bet, our belt, not be frugal with taxpayer money anymore?
I would like to have, have new programs.
And we'd like to continue to reimburse our faculty adequately, and these are things that we've not been able to do as much as what we'd like to do, and we've talked about.
Yeah, remember, we did not give raises last year.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah, so this is the point, I mean.
I heard from everybody.
And another thing, that our budget this year was based on a flat enrollment. We didn't have a flat enrollment. Our enrollment was down almost ninety percent. And that's significantly affecting, that'll affect.
Well, I'm saying, though, if we're gonna have budget surpluses, we ought to be putting some money into Ford County taxpayers, having their children, their, as students, not just their children, them also, to come to this school for less money.
And this does that by reducing and eliminating the online fee.
I was gonna say, you did a great job right before we began the presentation, the financial considerations. Clearly stating that, that for our Ford County students, we're reducing where from eleven and a half to sixteen and a, or sixteen point eight percent reductions in their tuition and fees by these changes.
Yes.
You know, based on, based on the numbers, the real data, the evidence of what the enrollments are looking, you know, what's your online enrollment. So these changes are going to save our Ford County students money, which is great. And I agree, and that's what we all want.
We're trying to help non-traditional students.
Yes. Because it's those folks only able to take five, six, you know, six hours that are just doing pieces here.
So if we make it more affordable for them, if we dip a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, it's maybe a hundred and ten, well, maybe that's, say, okay, well, maybe I can afford to take, you know, a few online.
And these are people who aren't able, it's, it's a, it's a world difference in the financial aid world when you're taking non-traditional classes, three, six hours at a time, than when you're a full student. And so this is drastic, this is money straight out of their pocket potentially. Trustee Malone?
I had a question. Um, even increasing enrollment, what areas? I mean, was it, uh, Ford County, Kansas, or out of state?
Well, it wasn't actually our international students. We went up on our international students too, not very much, we went up a little bit.
Residential halls are about the same.
Residential halls are down.
No, they're about the same. Well, we, they're about the same. Residential halls are about the same.
About the same?
Yeah.
So, I don't think it was Ford County though either, though, was it?
Yeah?
I've been out on medical leave, and so I would have normally given you that report last month, and so I'd be happy to bring it in December. And it shows a breakdown. Um, we, we were down in CTE hours, which would be expected, or workforce. And so I can break the categories and show you. If you would allow.
I mean, just to be honest, we've been in our pilot program too.
Yep, yeah.
I think you had, I had talked about, I guess, last year after the New York ACCT, about what's, you know, the programs that are sweeping the country, and that is the three college programs. I mentioned that Kansas is uniquely situated to, um, do that, because the way we're funded, because all of it, virtually all of it comes from the people who own the college, just like the high school. The, uh, my opinion is, is that the Ford County students have already paid for their education by taxes. Fifteen, fourteen, fifteen million dollars a year. So I, I would hope that we can bring enough information to the advocacy group next year to show the benefits if we would simply open the doors to Ford County students, and let them have access like they do to the high school. There's nothing, nothing better than education for our energy. And when we look at our population, uh, for many people, the fees here are extremely low. And for many people, it's something that closes the door in the face. All we have to do is look at our population and, um, and our the aid we get from the state for the poverty level, or whatever, the students at risk. And realize that, uh, we should look for ways that would eliminate any type of law or order that were to do that. I think we can. And I, I think the three hundred students with increased state aid with, uh, new students would level out any loss in tuition and fees. So I hope that we discover that. I guess I have problems when other states, um, if you look at Colorado, you go to Aurora College, and it's gonna cost an out-of-state or four hundred dollars, the same in Arizona. So, um, I hope that we can achieve it.
Thank you for that, uh, trustee Malone. I talked, Sharice was with me, I guess Friday, and, and Dr. Dirksen. And there's one odd aspect that we can look at, and this is something you might want to look at, it's called early college. A lot of states in the country are doing the early college, where they're allowed to go for free, get their high school and their college for free. And these are, you start out with a hundred students in your freshman year, sophomore year, and these are a lot of students that can't afford to go to college, but they, I think getting that, getting, being able to get into there, get into the college, and being able to, uh, I know we had, in our last school, we graduated sixty-eight students in our, in our first class, and all sixty-eight of them were engineering majors. And all, and most of them, most of them were up.
You know, I think that, um, when you look at the, the regents institutions that depend, uh, well, it depends on tax dollars and tuition, but there's a reason that, uh, somebody from Illinois or from California is paying twenty-four thousand dollars at K-State or KU, and the in-state resident is paying six. And when we had, when they brought you in and elected to have a community college, everyone in this state, every county in this state had an opportunity to join in and say, that's a great idea, we want to be a part of it. But they didn't, because they liked us paying for shareways. And I, I don't understand why nineteen colleges don't get their backs together and require the, uh, people who want to take advantage of a good education don't want to pay for it, or that the state doesn't want to pay for it. And I, I really think that's the, if you look at the historical laws, uh, in the legislature, when they developed those, they really did worry about the burden we were feeling about to take on. They had very good laws to protect us from doing what could happen, and then we just kept taking our six gun out and shooting ourselves in the foot by doing away with, uh, at one time they required the out-of-staters to, to pay four times, I believe, tuition of an in-stater. I think the Kansas regents had to pay two, two or three times. And then we get away with that, because we're all competing with each other for the, for the same students, and we thought we would get out. We built these huge athletic programs. Uh, it takes us about eight or nine thousand dollars to, uh, entice a Florida student here. That's eight thousand dollars we're in the hole. We don't get any state aid, and then we get about a two thousand dollars. And I don't think, I will not, another question ought to be asked, is it, is it proper for us to require the Ford County people to subsidize the educations of out-of-staters who don't pay any taxes? I think.
I think a lot of you, sitting at this table with me, and maybe people out in the audience too, I know some in the audience, live in a very different world than I do. I work with fifty or sixty underprivileged young women every year, and some of them simply cannot afford to come to this school. They grew up here, they live here, their parents have paid for this school, they cannot come to this school, they cannot afford it. And we sit here with our country club memberships and money in our pockets, and we say, I'm sorry, the school's not for you. Because, because we don't have, we don't have an opportunity for you to go to that school that's in your community. And you may say that that's not correct, but it's absolutely correct. I see these young women every week or two, and I absolutely know that this is correct.
Well, if, if they don't have resources, that's what Pell Grants are for.
Exactly. We gave, we gave over seventy-five scholarships, five hundred dollar scholarships, to the senior classes, who are all, all, all in the Ford County area. And that, and that's a stackable scholarship, so they can use.
Understand. I mean, I understand that.
Seven counties and counties will get Pell Grants if they're eligible for them.
True.
They just simply don't have to pay taxes of fourteen million dollars a year to attend college. That's the difference.
But they pay, they pay more if they're out of, out of district.
Do you have enough Pell Grants for everybody that wants to come?
I mean, it's, it is what it is.
Are there enough Pell Grants for everybody that wants to come?
Oh, my gosh, yes. If you, if you're, if you're.
Everyone of your goods.
Yeah, yes, sir. Oh, my gosh, uh, we've got, they've gone up on Pell Grants substantially.
I've never known a deserving student at Iowa Wesleyan, Simpson College, or St. Mary of the Plains, who qualified for a Pell Grant not to receive.
Well, maybe they, I don't know what they have to do to qualify, but I know that many times they're coming to me and saying, Mr. Rackamore, can you help me with tuition and books? So I know, I, I don't know whether they applied, I don't know whether they applied wrong, I don't know whether they applied too late, I don't know whether they're not available to them, but I know from my experience that they're not getting them.
Well, you'll have to fill out your FAFSA, and you have to do it on time. And that's why I'm so glad to read that we have had people from, uh, this school over at Dodge City High School helping students fill out their FAFSA applications. And that's been, uh, something that not only students who come here, but now we're going and meeting students where they are. And I think that's a good thing to do.
Dr. Malone, what is the cost of providing an education here? The last figures I saw is around eighteen thousand four hundred. And that was from the reports that they don't do anymore, with that about three years.
Yes, that's, that's flexible, because it depends on what you put in your cost, and then you take, take what you're, they're gonna go by headcount, FTE, and then, so, and then your enrollment changes each year.
When you're talking about housing and.
Yeah, I'm talking about everything.
You're not talking with, with the student page?
No, I'm talking about what the cost is.
Yeah. And so that's, that's what makes it a little bit more difficult because of enrollment, because if you have a constant enrollment, say your enrollment's five thousand dollars, I mean, five thousand students and your, and your college budget's twenty thousand, twenty million dollars, well, that's pretty easy to figure out.
I mean, it does change every year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's, that's what's the last, I, I think that, that's why at K-State, if they're out of state, are you gonna pay?
What's our FTE here? About fifteen hundred? So if our budget's, if you do make about fif, if you make about FTE, it would be about thirteen thousand, a little over thirteen thousand every year.
Our tuition is what, the lowest in the state?
It's time for the state of Kansas to.
For Ford County students.
Well, that's what the report's in.
And all that does is shift it to the dashboard, right?
We haven't gone up in our meal.
No, I mean, but, you know, the lower the amount of money that we collect in tuition fees, raises the money, if that, if they don't pay, I mean, it raises costs.
The budget's the same either way.
It depends. Yeah, it's up to almost six thousand, if you get the max.
For, for a year?
For a year.
For a year.
It's short or short, six thousand.
So if, and then it varies by year and year level?
It varies, and if you don't get it, your, your family should be using it. But do you agree with that, Tom? That's the assumption.
So is sixty hours, the hours to graduate, two years?
Sixty-two. About sixty-two. Right, Jane?
Currently, it is sixty-six. We're having issues. We reduce our my degree requirements to sixty hours, and we'll be bringing a recommendation for that in December.
And our core is like forty-two?
So we're basically sixty, so at a hundred and ten dollars an hour, and sixty hours, sixty-six hundred dollars to graduate this school plus books. With a Pell Grant, a lot of these kids, like, they were talking about Bobby Cover, their whole education. Here at this school, if you live near Dodge, you didn't have to go for them more.
A lot of Ford County students get a refund check from their Pell Grant, because they actually get paid to go here.
So.
These are so poor.
That's, so basically, can they take that money on that Pell Grant and use it to buy their books?
And. So when it gets dispersed by federal financial aid, it gets applied to their bill first, and anything left over is paid to the student in a check.
So they can basically get a Pell Grant, get money in their pocket, and get it for education?
Yes, sir.
I think last fall, that's one of the things we discussed in here, was that I requested that we go over to the seniors at that high school, and to all the other schools around, and say, here is what you need to do, here is the application, uh, we'll, we'll set with you and, and, uh, fill it out during your government class or whatever. But that is something we need to do, because not everybody knows, and not everybody's getting it filled out, and not everybody has an understanding that they can go here for free, because they're not getting it done.
I, I was so happy to read Vex's report, and that that is happening more and more. I think, I agree with you. It's intimidating if you're a first generation college student.
It is.
Knowing, knowing what to do. And that's why I'm glad to see we're, we're changing our attitude and reaching out to Spearville, and to Buckland, and to Sim. and to Buckland and to Simran and, oh, beyond. And of course Dodge City High School and Hodgman County and Ness County and on and on. Because I agree with you in some ways, Dan. We've got to get the enrollment up here. We can't continue with a 9% slide for here. And so one of my passions right now is increasing enrollment. And I've made it clear to Bev and to Dr. Milkie that I'm very interested in pushing programs that increase enrollment.
And recruitment. We've got to get it recruited.
Wouldn't you agree that if the out-of-county student isn't paying their fair share, that just places more burden on the Ford County taxpayer?
I think what we would need to do was change how it's structured at the state level. I don't believe this institution can do that because I don't think if we charge great county students what it costs to educate them, that this college is viable anymore.
Why?
I don't think we would have the enrollment.
I don't think you need anybody but the Ford County students. We're not serving near where we should be in the first place. But we have a K-12 to serve all the children and students in our county. And we pay for that. Why, you know, 100... And we've been doing that for 110 years. Why haven't we moved to the on K-12 level and realized that this is the future and that if you're going to do anything, you're going to have to have at least two years of education? And why do we want to put a cost on that? Especially when we own the college, just like we own a high school, like we do in a high school. We wouldn't want to charge senior, I mean, high school tuition.
I just got my tax bill. I know the difference in the two. There's a lot of difference between my college taxes and my county school taxes.
But Terry, there's only...
They do educate 7,500s too.
But the high school, your seniors are, there's like 400 plus, juniors 400 plus, so you're talking about 800 there from Ford County if we took every single child or every single student. Buckland probably graduates, what, 36? I agree with Maya. We wouldn't be viable anymore.
Why wouldn't we be? Is it not more than 10,000 or 10,000, 5,000, 6,000 viable, but Buckland or Spearville? They have viable schools, and they have very small enrollments. I'm not advocating that's small.
But that's just it.
But we'd have to tax... But, I mean, it's not apples to apples, Terry. I mean, you'd have to tax the public three times. We all got our tax bills, I'm sure. Everybody in this room got their tax statements the other day. So you can go compare the number of mills that the USD takes from us and the number of mills that this community college takes. That's going to have to be comparable or you can't educate it. And you just, I mean, that's how it works. I mean, that's how you educate K-12. So if you're going to raise our mills to that, then you can do that. But you can't do it.
Like I said, you've got seven...
Another thing is, you know, I mean, you're talking about educating K-12. I think this is a great conversation, and it's a big topic. Wrong Room, it needs to be in Topeka though. And the problem is, is that you already don't require to educate everybody K-12. So we're talking about this number, but how many kids are in the sophomore grad... How many kids are in the sophomore class and how many kids are in the senior class? So we're already not, I mean, you're already losing students before they even get to the college age. Not everybody wants to go.
Well, I think you ought to be, you ought to be given access and an opportunity.
Sure. And I think we're trying to do our best to do that.
Well, I'll give you a perfect example. Rodney, I hate to call you out, but how many times have you been over to high school?
I've been over there at least 10 times at this point. As a matter of fact, I'm going tomorrow morning.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. Really appreciate you going.
And that's what we want to start doing. We want to make sure we're doing that.
Yeah.
And they won't let, they won't let, like, Louis go over there because there's certain times you can go, right? Or an official visit, but Rodney can go over there as many times as he likes, right? As many as he wants. So that's what we're trying, we're trying to get out there and do those kind of things.
Hopefully, we can embrace the free college because we can. It's simple. We just have to cut out some other expenses that aren't, that we divert our education funds from to and get serious about providing our own training for here in Ford County because other people that are here are going to stick around.
We need to get serious about improving the number of workforce offerings we have, and we haven't done anything to move in that direction as far as...
We're hiring a vice president in this, we're hiring a vice president for workforce that knows what's...
Well, I hope so. Because it's time. Past time.
I'm sorry. We're a ton with really, I mean, Topeka because it's a little money, but this is a problem that we created by ignoring the original laws they set in place.
That's what I'm saying, Terry, that we can't change the other counties in the state from this room. The counties in the state, if you're, if we're going to, if they're going to share cost for the colleges in the state and education of the students in the state, the conversation has to take place in Topeka.
Well, I think...
Or with a different representative in this room, but none of us sitting here.
I think it starts when the community colleges realize that they tend to take advantage of, and if they have, we can solve our own problem. And we can get in a partnership with Topeka out of it. But the idea that 87 counties in this state do not pay one dime to support the 19 community colleges is absurd.
I don't disagree, Terry. I don't, I think we're all on the same page in respect of, we want to do the best for our local students. We've got to keep the college financially viable and solvent and working through that process. I think that this is an admirable goal, but it's a goal a few years off at least. And so we've got to keep working on it.
I make a motion to approve the new fee schedule.
Thank you for the second. Any further discussion? I appreciate everybody's discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Can I make a couple more points? We would... I don't think we will make a $1 million surplus. Last year was unique because I came in and we outsourced and did some things to get the budget out of control. We had a lot of positions that we...
Reduced positions.
We've built that into the budget this year, so whenever we, you know, so then again with the eight and a half percent enrollment decline for this fall, we probably have that in the same spring. Now, when we go to a 60-hour degree, that's automatically going to knock off 1.2% of your enrollment credit hours. You're already behind the curve already.
Okay. That's a discussion for another time.
Thank you very much.
That's just extra work we're going to have to do next year to recover those lost credit hours. No fault of our own. This happened in Texas when I moved from 64 to 60, and our enrollment dropped, you know, 7% just automatically.
Yeah.
This is totally off subject, but because it's topical and I'm going to be gone soon, I won't be able to get the answer. So what, what's the reason for the cutting hours?
It's an initiative of the Kansas Board of Regents, and I think it probably stems from the idea that they would like to see students earn their degrees quicker in less time. So the four years are being, also reduced their degree requirements to 120.
Some states will go ahead and go ahead at 126 hours, and then they go ahead if that person does it in four years, they'll go ahead and give them $1,000. Which doesn't sound like a lot of money, but they give them $1,000 for doing that. So it's, it's an incentive. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of access classes. For example, you may take a class here and think, "Oh, by the way, you may have to take a class at our institution."
May I review more closely at the transfer and articulation agreements as well and 24 outcomes to facilitate the transfer?
Mr., I appreciate it. I mean, at face value, it's the dumbing down of education. I mean, you're saying that, like, "Well, your degree, you don't have to actually work quite as hard for it. Like, we're going to give you a degree for less hours." I understand the argument. I see that side of it, but just, I don't know. Interesting.
I'd like to clarify that it's for the Associate of Science, Associate of Arts, and Associate General Studies. It's not any impact of workforce.
Workforce certifications.
Exactly.
Next topic, the planned service agreement with Johnson Controls, start recording.
This is a service agreement for our heat and air system to maintain them, to service them, and to keep them in good running order when they seem to not be doing too well right now. But we went out on bid hoping to get some possibly lower-cost competitors, but we didn't. The nearest competitor was $60,000 higher, so we're kind of... And even that competitor, the bidder, could not do everything that was required in the bid, so we're kind of stuck with Johnson Controls.
Did you say you're not satisfied with their service?
But it's kind of like, you know, Cox Cable. Is there an alternative in town to Cox Cable?
Direct TV.
Oh, well, okay, I guess.
Okay. All right. Well, that was one of my questions. Are we satisfied with the service and dependability of Johnson Controls?
I think you can ask anybody who freezes or gets hot during the day that they're not satisfied.
I noticed in the agreement that we are, I guess we do, they don't change the return air filters.
No, they're supposed to as well.
It says in there that they don't. I think it says they don't. I missed it. I didn't underline it. I can read again, but anyway, I thought, well, that's going to be on us, so.
If you know another company, we'll be happy.
I'm not arguing that we shouldn't hire. I'm just saying, I thought probably they would be, since we were hiring them, they would be, everybody would say, "Yeah, they're great. They're dependable." So now you shop me...
Dan, I'm just looking here. It doesn't have a page number, like, split system cooling with gas and heat, 7.5 tons of, of, it's 7.5 ton unit, and the quantity number six, and service provided return air filter change.
Okay. I thought they did. But we have, we've been having, I don't know so much as Johnson Controls, maybe it's too quick. We've had the control board and the student union that's been off and on, you know, we kind of have to reboot it, and then it works for a while, and then it quits. You know, I think every morning, the president's office is like 32 degrees, and then by the afternoon, it's 85. And so it's difficult.
Yeah. I got to my car.
Yeah.
My car.
I just heard it all.
And we found out that one of the thermostats, it's kind of like, you know, those Christmas lights, if one goes out, it's hard to find, you know, which one it is. But the one thermostat that's actually up here on the second floor was not working, or maybe it was, but it connected with the thermostat downstairs. It's interesting, safely. It's one of our challenges. We've looked at, and we may still investigate the possibility of hiring our own person. The problem is, the system we have is very unique, and we can't really find anybody that understands our system. You almost have to be trained. But it might be worth it just for have somebody hired for that sole purpose.
I think we're going to have a program called HVA Central.
Good point. That's kind of personal.
There's a lot of contracts.
Because if you think my office is cold, come into my bathroom. I've never been in there anymore. Too much information. It's freezing. I can handle it.
I move we accept the planned service agreement from Johnson Controls.
Motion, trustee.
Second.
Second, trustee Ickamborn. Any further discussion?
No, but I'm impressed with Maya coming up with that really fast on your...
100-page.
Document, you knew right where it was.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Action item F, the city of Dodge City agreement construction of walkroom at Cavalier Field. A.D. Ripple would present it.
I was worried you left. First off, thank you, Vice Chairman President for the trustees. I also want to apologize a little bit for the late addition of this. There were a lot of moving parts, working with, working with some different entities, the city and the YMCA. And I really appreciate the cooperation that we've gotten from the city on this. Background of this, obviously, as we play our baseball games at Cavalier Field, which is a city-owned facility, when we first entered into that agreement, they provided a locker room space in the current building that is there. The locker room space is actually fairly small. When you're talking about 36, we talked about 36 guys, I think it's only 406 or 480 square feet. So it's a very small facility. The YMCA is currently looking to expand some of their operations, and part of that expansion would take over that room that is there. The city has been a wonderful partner in the fact that they have agreed to construct a similar space to what is, what is currently there, which would still be that 480, 80 square foot building. And as you look at it, they, when they figured that cost in, I believe they figured that cost at $115,000, $523, something like that. And then, I know it was $115,000, I think it was $523, and then we asked about if we're going to, if you're going to build a facility, we would like to build a facility that actually meets our needs over there. And not only would we feel like it meets our needs, also, obviously, with the Dodge City Age being a piece of the summer as well, it would better fit their needs as well. The city has committed to a piece of this, I've been wearing, I've already got it, has committed to a piece of this. But what we are looking at now is, in order to expand that from the smaller facility to a 1,200 square foot facility, which you can see in the packet is, would be a 30 by 40 foot building that would sit just behind the east dugout at the field. And the consideration would be that the city would cover the cost upfront, but we would repay up to a maximum of $100,000 over a three-year period in order to build the facility that would meet our needs. As you look in the, now I've talked to Dr. Fordy and Dr. Milkie, and I was approached about this, as you look in the packet, it does show that the total cost is $195,567, which, which obviously would only be about $80,000. However, when we talk about it, there are a few things that are not in that building that we feel would be relevant to providing the facility that we need. And so we actually put a little, after talking to Dr. Fordy and Dr. Milkie, he said we wanted to put a little bit more money into that in order to provide that. If you guys still agree, the financial consideration obviously would be that we would pay a maximum of $100,000 over a three-year period. And so with that, I would respectfully recommend that we approve this agreement with the city of Dodge City for the construction of the locker room at Cavalier Field with a maximum cost of $100,000 split over a three-year period. This will be getting the final approval from the city commission, which I can be sure you have verbal confirmation that your, that your commission would agree to it. And also, legal counsel would approve the written agreement. The reason this has gone quickly is going into construction. In order to meet the numbers that they want to meet, they have to have a decision by November 25th in order to be able to purchase the materials to build the building at this point. And that's why we put the rush. Obviously, the city has been a wonderful partner in what they agreed to do. I appreciate Shuri's coming tonight and sticking around tonight to discuss this. I know you've been put on the spot more than what you thought you were going to be tonight.
Sorry.
But I do appreciate that. So with that, I would...
And we do apologize, but this is just a golden opportunity for our students. I think it's going to be, if we had it the way it is, it's going to be one bathroom for 26 guys.
Right. Will we own the, will we own the building?
No, the city will still own the building. It would be similar to our agreement that we have with Bad Legends, where we are paying for a proportion of the turf, but they actually own the facility.
Okay. And will we pay rent on this building after we're done?
I believe, and I don't know for sure, that's part of the written agreement that would come from, from their legal counsel, Brad Ralph, and that would be something that Glenn would obviously have to look at, but... that Glenn would, would obviously have to look at. But, um, I believe it would probably fall under the, uh, the current agreement that we have, uh, facility usage agreement that would not, not force us to pay rent, but rather we have a usage agreement with them already.
We don't pay rent on that field?
No, we do not.
Okay. So, well, I just-
A dollar, a dollar a year.
I was a little concerned. We're gonna pay for half the construction cost. And I know we're building it on city land, but it just seems like if we don't get some kind of agreement that we're not gonna pay rent, then one of these days we're gonna be paying rent forever. On a building, on a building that we bought, I mean, ha, bought fifty percent of anyway.
I think that's where you have a lease agreement in perpetuity, like a dollar a year or something.
And that's where I said pending approval, pending, uh, our council curves with the written agreement.
Sharice, you have.
So I just wanted to add that we're gonna try to work with my beneficial for everybody.
I know.
But it is a two percent interest rate. I think that would, um, that's what we're gonna be paying on those funds. So, um, but we're gonna try to work out a long-term agreement so that it benefits everybody. Um, we'll, we'll own it because it's set on our-
Right.
-land and we are paying for a pretty good chunk of it too and might use it. Um, so, um, but we'll also be providing for the insurance on it and the utilities. So we'll have to probably work out something because that's a significant change in square footage. Um, but I don't think it'd be significant. We'll try to work the energy efficiency issues as much as we can. And I, I really got involved in this this morning at breakfast and so-
Lunch.
Yeah, lunch.
But I mean, that's, that's the partnership, that's the fun partnership we have with the city and the county and the U.S. D.
But twelve-hundred square foot is what the building's gonna be.
Yes.
Significant.
We need a few showers and a few, few, uh-
Well, this isn't the proper plan then, is it? This isn't the right floor plan.
No, we would, that's why, and that's why, in this, it shows, it only shows basically eight-one thousand that the city would not cover. And that's why we added that up to a maximum cost of a hundred thousand.
I would say that doesn't look like-
To make those changes.
Doesn't look like much of a locker room.
Twenty-six guys and, yeah.
Yeah. It, it will be nice not to have those muddy cleats coming into the locker room where I use, so, so it's a why.
And, and one of the other things that will allow us to have some storage space over there, so we're not bringing uniforms back over here to do laundry and things like that as well.
Well, that brings up a point. Who all will have access?
Um, through our season, I believe it will just be, uh, our team through the summer, uh, the Dodge City As will also have some access to it as well.
Yeah.
That was why I was wanting to make sure the AAs are able to access to it.
I just found out about four o'clock this afternoon, so we haven't, we haven't thought it through very far.
And we're, and we're very sorry. It's just an opportunity that was, I mean, I'd rather have a twelve-hundred than a four-hundred.
Yeah. There is something about metal buildings going up December first, and I think that's what we need to-
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
I'm looking for one right now. I heard the same thing.
It's exactly what it is. They, if they can get the, the, the materials purchased by November, or by November twenty, uh, five, this stays.
And our, our, uh, voting to approve is contention upon Glenn's-
Yes.
And Sharice, but I think you've got the-
And the city.
Yeah, it's scheduled. I called all my commissioners. They're willing to have a special meeting at twenty-eight o'clock to address this.
And we'll, we'll bring the agreement back to you.
Thank you.
To, to the board, the final.
That's one of the things that we're gonna have.
Gonna have to work that out.
We can get it as energy efficient as possible. We're not gonna mess with the accounting.
Yeah.
Another question. I know this isn't the correct term, but it looks alike expectancy. There's another word for it, other building. You know, I-
Oh, my gosh. A long time.
Well, we take care of it.
If it's built right, a long time.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I've had my barn for forty years. It's still in great shape. So, you know, I mean, it's a metal building.
If you're gonna build something, it'll be on the right.
Yep, it should.
And we need to maybe match the rest of the decor out there. That would be, you know, fancy.
That's very good. The city and county's gonna have to match. Don't get me started. That's so much.
We have a contract to be aesthetically pleased and cool.
Dollar, whatever. That's a bigger work.
But man, check the terms of this thing.
No, no. It's just, that's not working.
Is there a point of clarification there? The states that will enter into a four-year agreement, but with the repayment period of three years?
Yeah, it'd be a three-year.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure which-
That's a misprint on my, we had talked between, Dr. Fordy and I had talked between four and three, and that's a misprint. I'm sorry. It would be a three-year.
I just didn't know if that was, we weren't paying until after it was built.
I tried, I tried to get you four, but she said four. Yes.
I move we agree to-
Forty-two months.
Do this.
I second it.
I'm mad.
Didn't hear me. I make a motion to approve.
Motion, trustee Reckonborn.
And I second.
Second, trustee.
Discussion.
Yes, please.
There's thirty-six baseball players. Four of them are from the state of Kansas. Thirty-two, we don't get any state aid. We got a minimum of two thousand dollars and they, the entire team in the status, we would pick up a quick sixty-four thousand dollars, which would almost pay for the building. So I had hoped that, uh, I would thank you and Stevenson if anybody can do it and compete with the people in the state of Kansas against the others. So I hope that's considered.
I did notice that Butler, who always has a great team, has more Kansas players than any other team in the state of Kansas.
They have.
Well, I know, but so, so our coaches can drive to Sedgwick County and recruit, can't they?
They do.
But on, but on the other hand, Jacob, I want to commend you on being the first one to come in under our new mission, vision, and core values, bringing the students first and our community together, working as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I, I would like to, to trustee along this point of the thirty-six, I would like to point out that, uh, as a baseball team, you only get twenty-four letter of tens. And so-
They have thirty-six on the roster.
Only twenty-four are on an athletic scholarship. So even, even some of those that are completely, are paying.
Walk on away.
They're walking away.
No, I agree, but they're paying, they're, they're, we're not paying tuition for them. So.
They're also living in our house.
Well, that's an expense.
Okay.
With no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
You moving on?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharice. We have no additional unfinished business, no new business. Um, we did have one extraction from the consent agenda for discussion. Personnel, item number eight. Trustee Reckonborn, you have a question, sir?
Well, I did. I'm, uh, very concerned about that position. Uh, it's, it's listed that it's a, and, and you know why I'm concerned. If you don't, you haven't been listed in the last two years. It's a sixty thousand dollar salary. We have teachers that have been on this staff for ten and fifteen years, have master's degrees, and are not making sixty thousand dollars. And this is not an academic position.
Right.
This is an athletic position. And I think we are, and I've said it over and over, we're undervaluing our academic instructors. I'm not saying we're overvaluing this one, but we're certainly undervaluing our academic instructors. When we can have somebody new come in and, and draw sixty thousand, when we're paying instructors ten or twelve thousand dollars less than, it, it's not right, folks. It's just not right. And, and it doesn't sit well with instructors either. It ju, it doesn't.
Would, would this be, I apologize, Jacob, is it salary based because we have to be very equitable with Title IX requirements?
Um, there's, there's a piece of that, but probably the bigger piece is the expectation of this is going to be that our, the size of our spirit squads will increase dramatically over where we've been for the, well, since I've been here. Um, at this point, we're looking at, uh, I think the most that we've had since I've been here has been about fourteen of our spirit squads. And we're looking at, we're expecting this to draw, uh, that number closer to fifty to sixty.
And working closely with the AAs.
I know, but if you, if you have, if you have great instructors that develop a reputation for being great instructors, they are also gonna attract people to the college, you know? And you're not gonna get those great instructors unless you're willing to pay the price.
I've signed those, those things that you're talking about, and we, we're paying quite well.
Could I ask this? This is our faculty here on a nine-month or a hundred and sixty-eight eight contract. Is this, is it twelve-month?
Twelve-month contract.
I think that's a great point, trustee Reckonborn. I think, you know, continuing to reach out to our faculty to discuss competitive fair market valuing for their pay, so that just as this, we're paying fair market value for this relative position as with other colleges who are having to compete against a recruiter to employ. Um, and the same thing, I'd encourage our faculty to be open to that conversation so that we can, we can reimburse them on, on a fair schedules to, to meet that. Just as you said, sir, they're doing a good job and they're, they're doing and they're recruiting and they're bringing students in based on their reputation and what they're providing. We should pay them equitably for that. Unfortunately, on the current system and the eighteen thousand instead pay schedule, we can't do that.
And I would have trouble hiring a, an HVAC instructor for what we pay. I need, we need a good one.
As a, as a board, if, if you're not alarmed by the shrinking pool of teachers at public school level and at the college level, you need to be. The pool of teachers is shrinking rapidly in this country. It, it truly is.
But, but sir, we, we have been able to hire because of these two ladies right here. We've hired some of the most outstanding instructors I've ever seen. And I mean, we, it's amazing what we've been able to hire. And our, and our nursing faculty are paid extremely well. Extremely. I signed those contracts, sir, and they are extremely, it's a good situation. We, we are full in our nursing programs.
Well, that's the only questions and comments I have on the list, and so, uh, I make a motion that we approve.
Motion for approval of consent agenda?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Thank you. Um, council curves, I believe, has an executive session for us to recess into. Would you like to present that?
Yes. Dr. Presley, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss an employee matter pursuant to personnel matters, in exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B. One. The open meeting will resume in this location at eight-twenty P.M. In addition to the trustees, the president, vice president Tamar, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
May I ask that we have a five-minute break before we enter into this executive session?
Eight-twenty-five.
Eight-twenty-five.
We will, we will take a five-minute break, resume our executive session to end at eight-twenty-five.
I need a-
Ball, motion?
I move.
Motion, trustee, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Where you got all opposed? Okay. We're reconvening after our executive session. Um, we do need to extend our executive session for a brief time longer. Council curves, for an additional ten minutes?
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Presley, I recommend the board, uh, recess into executive session to discuss an employee matter pursuant to the personnel matters, in exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, B. One. The open meeting to resume in this location at eight-forty P.M. In addition to the trustees, the president, vice president Tamar, and the college attorney should be included in the executive session.
Hearing the motion.
I move.
So moved, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. We'll be re-zooming at eight-forty.
You don't know what you're discussing.
We welcome everybody back for our executive session. There will be no action to be taken after the executive session. There's no other items on the agenda before the board. And I would take-
Motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.